Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take your call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bassey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Risa Hicks Clayton is absent. Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wetzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Nancy Byer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please be seated. Next, we have the agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the agenda order of business for May 8, 2018, regular council meeting be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bassey. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have the agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I motion that we approve the minutes from April 24, 2018, from the regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council as submitted.
Second.
Councilman Muscat seconded that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearings and comment on agenda items, and this would include the corporate fund budget public hearing. Does anyone from the audience step up to the microphone, state your name?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Zohair Abdallah, 354 Rosemary. I went back a little bit to June 12, 2012, to look at the city council agenda. And just to make, before I say anything, to make myself clear, I'm not against giving raises to anybody who deserve it in the city if the money is available. I would encourage that, as a matter of fact. But at that meeting, the heads of departments were present.
Stop.
Yes, please. Excuse me, Mr. Abdallah. We need to have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Correct. And I was going to do that.
So before we have to do this officially, okay?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I make a motion that we open up the public hearing for, in comment on agenda items, and most specifically, 2018 and 2019 corporate fund budget public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bassey. All right, continue.
Okay. Vote, please.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Pardon me. Can I read the public notice? I need to read this. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 8, 2018, at 8:00 PM, in the council chambers located at 6045 Fenton, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, for the purpose of hearing objections, if any, to the proposed budget for the city of Dearborn Heights for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Property tax mileage rates proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be the subject of this hearing. A copy of the budget will be available for inspection at the office of the city clerk at 6045 Fenton, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. This notice will be posted on the Internet at www.c.i dearborn heights dot m i dot U S after approval and by direction of the city council, under and by virtue of the city clerk. Sign Walter J. Pershevich, clerk of the city of Dearborn Heights.
This chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I want to apologize to Mr. our city clerk, Walter Pershevich. I kind of fell down on this one, and thank you for stopping us and getting it back on the right call. Thank you.
Is my three minutes up?
Yep.
You're done.
We'll start over.
You can't question this anymore. You're done.
This is regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, June 12, 2012. I'm trying as fast as I can, so please bear with me. Present council members, and also present was the heads of department, Mr. Mayatke, the mayor, and specifically, Mr. Subah, Mr. Zimmer, the director of Gribble. That night, resolution 12 to 18 was passed, and 12, 2019 was passed. If you allow me to read this resolution. Motion by councilman Berry, seconded by councilwoman Horvath, that proposed ordinance H-12 dash 12 dash 04, an ordinance of the city of Dearborn Heights, providing that the code of ordinances city of Dearborn Heights be amended by amending section 2 dash 182 and by adding section 2 dash 184, section 2 dash 237, and section 2 dash 238, all of which concern retirement benefits. Be considered read for the second time was the stipulation that the controller add to the 2011, 2012 dash 2013 budget that all combined earning for department heads that take early retirement, not exceed $55,000 annually, to become effective up in publication in the city's official newspaper as provided by law. Six people voted yes, Mrs. Badalow voted no. And 12, 2019 basically is the same thing as this ordinance was passed after deliberation, and it was read twice in the presence of the concerned people who are asking for more money, you know, to their salaries. I just want to thank councilman Ray Muscat, who draw my attention to it, because he said he was present here, and I did search it, and I found it, you know. Anyway, I am afraid that this was an ordinance. If anybody does encut his grass and violate an ordinance, we ticket them, and we might take him to court. I am just trying to warn this honorable city council. You might be violating an ordinance exist on papers in the city if you do pass the increases in salaries for those people who agreed to take early retirement, and they were present when this passed. So please be careful with what you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Does somebody want this back, or I was going to give to the attorney for research?
Okay.
Madam Chair, just for clarification for the residents, this is a time, this is in regards to the corporate budget, the budget that we have for 2018. So this is in the event, any residents have any questions on the budget, this would be the time to do it. So I just want to clarify that.
Right.
That's what that's all about. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have fund transfers and current claims.
We have to close the meeting. Madam Chair.
Okay.
I move that we close the meeting of the corporate fund public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bassey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Miss Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council accept the current, the transfers and current claims, 6-1 through 617, as outlined.
Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Councilman Abdallah seconded, so it's moved by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Abdallah.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bassey.
Do we have anybody here from the assessor's office?
Normally, we do not unless you let us know, or then we can have somebody here. But Tony does not normally attend or attend the meeting.
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking is I saw here, we have an invoice for 6-2, an invoice for $2,079.49.
Yes.
It's for the assessor. I just had a question. Maybe I can keep my question till we go over his budget, right?
You can do that, but I would hope you'd approve this, because we got to send out by law the notices on the assessment law.
Okay, the second one, I still have an issue with, okay, I guess two questions. One, is the sewer cleaning? I'm still questioning that.
Which one is that?
6-10. I know Mr. Zimmerman, Zimmer meant, Zimmer, he actually, I'm sorry, Director Zimmer, he brought some pictures last meeting. I'm still questioning who's actually dumping, and there's got to be a way that we track the violators, who's dumping grease down the sewers. And I was, I went back a year and a half of council meetings, and I saw there was, there's been talked about for at least a year and a half, and we're still in the same situation. We haven't cleared it yet. And the second one, I see there's a lot of attorney fees on today's agenda for invoices. My question is, I know that the city attorney budget, we haven't gone over it, but why isn't it the city hiring an actual full-time attorney for the city? Because I see here, there's three invoices for attorney fees, and it's a lot cheaper to hire an attorney that works for the city than to keep paying, there's three different invoices for three different attorneys.
I mean, if you want, but I disagree with your assessment, but go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I remember looking into this issue a number of years ago, back when Mayor Canfield was the mayor, and the budget for the city of Dearborn was probably about, with all of the labor and regular work that we did, the city of Dearborn's budget, and they would still go out to outside council, was probably about five to six times as much, because you're not factoring in all of the retirement benefits, the type of schedule that they end up having in terms of working, you know. So, no, it would not actually be cheaper. It would probably be far more expensive. And then you'd end up having people who would end up being employees, as opposed to independent contractors.
We also get a fantastic write from Gary that, quite frankly, maybe Mr. Constance could say this is exceptionally low in regards to fees. Yeah. Council chair.
Councilman.
So bigger cities have, like for example, Dearborn or city of Detroit, employees, but we have the need amongst other things for a wide variety of attorneys in different areas, expertise, labor and employment, water and sewer.
Planning.
Planning and zoning. So, and our charter requires that the city attorney, as many city charters do, be a resident of the city, and then, so Mr. Mayatke's the city attorney, and then he consults with other attorneys as their expertise requires. I know, for example, Mark Roberts attends all the planning commission meetings, and he has a lot of expertise. He works for a firm that represents many different cities. So it gives us a broader depth, and as our city attorney said, employees with the benefits and everything else, and then when you have an employee, you're still going to have to contract out for labor and employment for water and sewer, taxation, tax appeals.
And if I may, even if, even if you were to keep people, I mean, we had this with, what was it, Randall Brown from Corporation Council for Wayne County. He was the deputy corporation counsel, and what did he do? He had a great deal of expertise, but ultimately, he ended up going to the Great Lakes Water Authority. So we all enjoyed working with him on the various things we had with the county, but people will end up leaving after they have the expertise. So, you know.
Councilman Muscat.
But, you know, you mentioned residency requirement, but didn't the state overturn that now, the Supreme Court, about residency? Even though it's in our charter, because police no longer have to live here, firemen no longer have to live here. Yeah, but that's, that requirement is not, he's not an employee. That means that the person who has appointed the city attorney, they have to be a, required to be a resident by charter, but that person is not an employee. So you are correct that it was an anti-Detroit move. They outlawed residency requirements. But Mr. Mayatke is not an employee. He's a re-contract with him.
Not to, you know, not to, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that assessment, just in terms of the way the research I've done. I think it's possible to have someone who's not a city resident, but I do think that there's value in having a city resident.
City of Detroit, for example, in their legal department, you have to be a member of a union, and in order to be a member of the union, you have to live in the city. So their legal department, where I once worked as a law clerk, still requires indirectly you be a resident of the city of Detroit.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilman Muscat.
6-4, we're looking at water charges and sewage charges. No questions on the charges, but someone brought this up to me the other day when they were watching the construction along Beach Daily and wherever, when the construction companies are using water from the fire hydrant. Who gets charged for that? Is it the water department and the taxpayers have to pay for it? I mean, shouldn't that be the construction company if they got to use all their money? Well, the construction company does get a permit from DPW, but since it's a city contract, they do waive the fees, because it'd be discharged back to the city anyways in the contract. But any other contractor that's not a city contract, they do require a $2,500 deposit, and then water is metered, and whatever is not used is returned. So, they did pull a permit, but it was no fee. Okay, thank you. And another one on 6-3, 6-6, the major streets. Nothing with, again, with this, but we spoke to Mr. Brooks on Thursday about the concrete at Hask and Kinlock there, or Kingsbury, excuse me, and John Daly and Wilson, and these are brand-new roads. Okay, so you're still, and you know about when you're going to be able to see that? Okay, and I have one for Mr. Mayatke, though, on his claim. It's the, I'd have to find it in here, but it's for the work that, with this being done again, with liberal special assessments. Isn't that done?
No, that will be an ongoing thing.
That's going to be an ongoing thing?
Yep.
To do the assessment, I don't want to speak for you, but Gary's taking me through it, because I'd like to get that job done and over with, and the residents would. But in checking, because we really, when I first came on the council, they were doing some special assessments, but nobody here really has that expertise, and the checking he's done, he's been told that you have to follow a procedural format, you have, and so he's involved in every step of the process.
Yeah, and basically, I'm going to defer to Seacrest Wardle, which represents a lot of communities that are newer, like Auburn Hills, and that do a lot more special assessments to take on more of that aspect of the process, just because they have the expertise with regard to that. The contractual thing, which was, what was on this bill, is something that I feel that I can handle. It's not anything special in terms of special assessments, so.
I was just curious. I thought that was already put to bed.
No, no, as a matter of fact, when we were talking about that, Mark Roberts, I don't know if you remember Mark, but, you know, people were talking about getting this done, and he was like, have they ever done a special assessment before? And I said, no, I actually haven't done a special assessment in this community for decades. So he was like, you know, you can come back and have a lot of things, depends on if people object, so it's more complicated.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Don't.
Councilman Wetzel and Councilman Bassey are opposed. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of bids, tabulation of bids and return of bid bonds, City Hall HVAC unit, Public Service Administrator Zimmer.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move, we concur with Department Head Bill Zimmer. On Wednesday, the 25th of 2018, bids were to provide and install one York Predator, 6.5-ton HVAC unit or equal at City Hall were opened, attached are the bid reviews, and then they've gone through the reviews, and they've picked out a company named Allied Building Service on Howard Street in Detroit for the amount of $12,305. And the funds for this project will be, were allocated in the 2017-2018 budget, and they're requesting the approval for the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city in return of bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders, as outlined on item 7A.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have reports from the mayor. Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association Contract.
Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move this be moved to a study session, and have our Corporation Council look into this matter again. With all of the material that has been floating around, I would like the Council to take a look at that.
Second.
Okay, that is moved by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Bassey. Any further discussion?
If I may ask a question, what kind of timeframe are you looking at in terms of going to the study session?
Assume it's.
Next week, if we can, well.
Next week, okay.
Let me see what the schedule looks like. I'll know more.
Okay, I'll just assume next week.
After I get out of here tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to do it as soon as possible.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
This is for Council Gary. So, is this study, I mean, you know, this is a case where, you know, without getting into the details, but there's been some debate back and forth as far as the communication that's happening or not happening, and people replying or not replying, so without getting into the details, the question is, is it really a study session by us as council people that's needed, or is it really more getting the all parties to the table to get this thing all ironed out and finalized? Because it's, you know, it's dragging on, and I know both parties say they want to get this thing done, but it's not getting done.
You know, my recommendation, based on the fact that the mayor and the negotiating team met with the folks, and really, we could probably have a study session to a certain degree, and we could also have a closed session to a certain degree with regard to this, because there's been a lot of frustration, as I understand it, from the administration standpoint and negotiating team's standpoint. So, and I know that Labor Council has assured me that she's had like six different communications that have not been responded to by the union. So I think it would be helpful to end up actually probably having this matter, so that the council can end up being given a status.
Councilman Bassey.
I actually recommend that if we do move it to a closed session, we get all parties involved at the same meeting, so we can avoid keep going back and forth with this contract.
Well, the problem is, is we can't have a closed session. We can have a closed session with regard to negotiations when it has to do with strategy, but we can't really talk, we can't say that we're going to have a strategy session with members of the union, because they're the people on the other side. So we don't really have an exception to an open meeting when we meet with the union members with regard to negotiating. But we can have an open session as part of it, and we can have a closed session as part of it, and then you could probably end up talking to the union members at that point, and with the members of the administration, the closed session and open session to the degree that you see fit.
Okay, so if we were to do that, we have to, obviously, we have to announce it, not like last time, so if we do do that.
Yeah, we have to let the public know.
What I would, what I would end up suggesting is that the notice should say, study session and/or closed session. And that way, it covers both of the possibilities, however the body sees it fit to deal with.
Eighteen hours. Eighteen hours.
I second the motion to move to a study session.
Okay, now, any other discussion?
I second to move it to a two-session, so we have an open session or a closed session.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, on reports from the mayor, we have Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding.
Miss Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Again, I think this has got something to do with this contract now. I guess I opened up a can of worms on that, and we can't do anything with this, I believe, if we don't have the contract.
Understandable.
So then, we're going to have to put this one on hold also until the contract is approved.
I second that, too.
Okay, that is moved by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Bassey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, on the reports from the mayor, we have North Dearborn Heights Baseball League Opening Day Parade. Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League Permission Holder Annual North Dearborn Heights Baseball League Opening Day Parade on Saturday, May 5, 2018, at 10:00 AM, as outlined in 8C.
Second.
Supported by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from city officials. Clerk Pershevich, purchase of Samsung Galaxy tablets for the city council.
Miss Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council concur with Clerk Pershevich on his purchase of seven Samsung Galaxy tablets at a present cost of $519 per tablet, which times seven, seven council members, as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bassey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I spoke with the clerk earlier, and I know I spoke with you about this, too. I personally would suggest that maybe we amend the motion to say something like this or something of equal value, not to exceed this particular amount. And the reason being is, just to be sure, before we buy this, then we find out as a possibility, it's not compatible with our City Hall computers, or maybe not with Apple, et cetera, et cetera, just to have somebody that's more of an expert in that particular field, look at these, just make sure these are good, good for what we need to use, and then just have the amount not to exceed 519, et cetera, et cetera.
Miss Chair, I move to amend that, if there's any other objections.
Councilman Coniston.
Maybe we could have IT look at it.
Oh, because, yeah, technology changes, and there may be something new coming out that, you know, works better, is.
It would make this void.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you have to put a time limit.
I'd like to amend the motion, then, to concur with Walter Pershevich, our city clerk, to purchase seven tablets similar to the Samsung Galaxy Tab S332 or equivalent, which maybe IT can help us with, to make sure that they're compatible with city IT.
Okay, Councilman Bassey.
Yeah, we have to put a time limit on it, so we're not waiting a year for these, so.
Let's just give it a couple weeks. In two weeks, we'll readdress it again.
Well, I don't, I don't think we have to do that. I think once we approve this, we can.
That's just our discretion when we purchase.
All right.
Question of the clerk, he can.
So I made the motion, we need a second.
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Bassey. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from city, yeah, if you look at our paperwork on the table here, we need something like that. All right, next, we have Clerk Pershevich, budget amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the clerk's office request for the following budget adjustment from election, capital outlay account number 101-190-981, the amount of $5,000, to council supplies number 101. supplies number 101-101-728, the amount of $5,000. The budget transfer will provide funds to purchase the Samsung tablets for the city council to reconcile the current deficit of $272,54 as outlined in 9B.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Excuse me, I think we'd have to adjust this one to say Samsung tablets or similar or equivalent value.
I think that would be.
Because it's gotta, it's gotta be the same.
I think that would be covered under the other motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is Treasurer Riley, Interfund Loans.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that we concur with our Treasurer, John J. Riley II, and authorize the Treasurer to enact interfund loans if needed. We had a study session before our meeting and discussed last year, for example, we did not need to do any interfund borrowing to keep our cash flow current, but the Treasurer asked us to authorize this, to borrow up to $1,750,000 if needed, as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I'd like to actually see if there's a timeline on here. So if this, if you guys, I talked to Treasurer Riley earlier, if the money's needed, is it gonna go back in front of the council to say, "Okay, we need to pull that money out because it's required"? That's the first question.
Treasurer Riley?
Yes. No, I won't come back before the council. This is basically your authorization, giving me the authority to utilize the interfund loan if needed. And then, but you can see in the request that I'm, you know, that the loan shall be paid back by September 15th, 2018. So that'll be part of your motion because it says in accordance with 9C. Now, last year, we didn't borrow at all, but the year before, when we borrowed, I think it was 500,000. I'm just going from the top of my head, I don't remember that off, I have the sheet on the other table. But we paid that off in the month of August, so I would anticipate. Even, even the, yeah, the taxes aren't coming in. And I think on the schedule I showed you, if we were at to borrow the 750,000, which the projections show now, that also is a schedule to be paid back in August when the tax revenues start coming in. So basically, you're talking about a loan that would be 60 days. And that's it. And then it ends. So, and again, the, you know, the situation that brought this upon is that basically when we purchased the golf course, we used some of our liquid cash to buy in liquid asset. Now, let's just say we don't close on the golf course and Kerry could, if we don't close on that by, you know, end of June and July, it's possible we would have the cash, so.
Yeah, we plan on.
We plan on closing. And it's in the projections to close, and we have the money to close.
See, I mean, I don't have an issue with borrowing the money if needed. I just had a problem that we're actually taking a loan, but at the same time, we're paying out a lot of pay raises. That was my concern.
Yeah. I mean, the budget that you're referring to is not until next year's budget, which starts, you know, on July 1st. So this is kind of just to get us over the hump to, you know, to handle the cash flow.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
Yeah, just so everybody understands, it's, it's all city money.
Right.
With government accounting, it's how the dollar's tagged, so we're not like some other communities we talked about, sold, had to sell tax anticipation.
Very costly. It's very costly. We do not want to go through that process.
We're, we're borrowing from a fund in the city to fund another fund.
Right. And that fund, and the general fund will pay interest at a very, at a very good rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is Corporation Council Miyake, Warren Valley Golf Course Participation Agreement Modification.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move to modify the course of action authorized and approved by motion 17-425 relative to the liquor license for the Warren Valley Golf Course. If Corporation Council Miyake determines that the ability to use the conditional liquor license may be delayed by entering into a participation agreement with Oneida Golf Services Incorporated or by seeking Liquor Control Commission approval of such a participation agreement, then the administration shall not be required to either enter into such an agreement with Oneida Golf Services, Inc., or to seek Liquor Control Commission approval of such an agreement. In all other respects, motion 17-425 remains unchanged as outlined in 9D. Support.
Supported by Councilman Constance. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
So I realize this here is for the liquor license. Are we gonna see another agreement to who's, I remember you guys mentioned something that you're gonna have the same company managing the golf course to manage it. So are we doing anything with the contract for?
The agreement between the county and the concession year, Oneida, is being assigned to us per the motion that we just referred to. This is to make sure that there's not going to be any unanticipated delay with respect to the liquor license approval.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. So are we, the council, are we gonna see a new contract once we close on the golf course?
No, not, not the, not the start.
Okay, so.
They're still under contract?
They're still under contract.
For how long?
Twenty, I'm not sure if it's twenty, I think it might be 2021, but I don't remember the exact.
I thought it was for three additional years. I'm not, I don't want to be caught on that, but my last reading of it, I think, was for three years.
Yeah.
But in the middle of a golf season, you don't want to make a change.
Okay, well, my, my concern is, I mean, the reason why I'm asking about a contract with whatever company is managing Oneida, is for that accountability, just to make sure that they're actually, if they're doing something different or we need to do something different or get another company to make the golf course profitable and not have the same issue that Wayne County had with it.
Well, it was profitable. Wayne County wasn't telling the truth and our county commissioner gave us the statistics. The place made money, so, and it made money for the county, despite what the county executives said. But the other thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but you've got Oneida and you have Wayne County and liquor, liquor license. So we're doing a transfer one for one. If you start taking Oneida out now, what, we have to go for a brand-new license? There won't be any alcohol there for the whole summer.
We have, well, we do have to do that already, but we can get a conditional license and that is a much faster approval. And that's the idea. So we would have the conditional license until we get the permanent license. And the permanent license should not be difficult, as far as we can tell, based on the idea that they already, the person who'd be running it would be the same person. So that just, you know, if they've already been approved, then it should be smooth.
Any further discussion? Councilman Constance.
They're the same outfit that is now operating the Instrigolf course.
That is correct.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have Police Chief Gavin, Justice Center Security Gates.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Lee Gavin to replace and rebuild of the Justice Center's security gates. They're currently rusting out and internal controls and equipment will be due in this project. They've maintained the gates since the opening of the building. And this expenditure has been put in capital outlay for the police department for the 2018-19 budget years. And it requires a 50% deposit for the gate manufacturing. And the chief is requesting that a check in the amount of $19,037,050 be cut in the month of June for this project. And the remaining amount of $19,003,750 will be paid upon the completion of the project as outlined in item 9E.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Any discussion?
Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Did we go out for bid on this, or maybe so we can get this done a little less expensive than almost $40,000?
Chief Gavin, would you like to?
I mean, I know that they've been doing this from day one, but if they've been doing it for day one and it only lasted this long, maybe it's time to go find someone else.
Yeah, we had a few companies come in. We didn't do formal bids, but this company's been there since day one, like it says. And the gates are down, rusted at the bottom. And the reason we're requesting the check in advance, we have it budgeted in the budget, but they need 50% down to start manufacturing the gate, so that's the reason. But we had some other people come in, not a formal bid, just to look at it early on in the process, and they were even more money.
Well, you know, I don't question that, but it would be nice to, next time, to see bids from other companies so we can actually seize the bid.
Okay.
But I'm sure you know what you're doing. Thank you.
Any further, Councilman Wenzel?
Chief, the, the detection loops in the concrete, are they bad? They don't work? Or is that something that, that you're just gonna get new because you're doing everything else new?
Over the past few years, they've come in and they've had to cut away the concrete in front of the gates for whatever electrical system is under there, the remote, and the gates are getting rusted down at the bottom. So we put some signs up. A lot of times, gates are breaking, they're being stuck open, and that's a big security issue. We put some signs up, "Police entrance only." So it's, the whole system is getting old. You know, when the station got built there in 2003, so we're talking 15 years, doesn't seem like that long. Seems like they should be working, but they're not. So we just want to make sure we get the, you know, gates up so we have some security there.
15 years is not old at all for equipment.
I, I know that.
I have to disagree with you on that one, though. Stuff like that should last 30 years.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is Police Chief Gavin, Portable Radio Activation.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council concur with Chief Lee Gavin in the payment to the state of Michigan for programming 54 new portable radios, recently purchased from Motorola. The total cost is $13,500. The payment will be deducted from the police department contractual services account as outlined in 9F.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have new business on the agenda. This is for business license renewals for Applebee's at 26582 Ford Road. We have Buck's Pub at 23845 Warren. Dearborn Heights Moose Lodge at 27225 Warren. Denny's Gin Mill at 4901 South Telegraph. And First Mutual Auto at 6888 North Telegraph.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that the business licenses for the aforementioned businesses as outlined in 13A, the council chair just mentioned, be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question for the clerk on the license for Denny's Gin Mill. And I know there was an attached water bill to that. According to this, they owe $1,536.78. At one of the council meetings, one of the things that we had discussed is if somebody's behind, to force their hand to possibly not renew their license. I see a bill behind, I see they had a previous payment where they were behind before. Do you know any more information on this one as far as what the status is on the water?
It looks like they paid it.
It looks like they paid it. There's a receipt.
Well, no, but according to this, at present time, you are liquid in the water bill, so I just wanted to make sure that it is paid.
It's right, there's a receipt right here.
Okay. Right, but that amount was not the 1536.
Right.
That's what.
What I believe happened with this business, between the time that we sent the notices, these notices go out two months in advance of the expiration date. When we sent them out, that was the amount they owed. Subsequently, they made a small payment, which reduced the amount. And when they came in, we checked the amount. Once again, when they come in, to make sure that the amount is accurate, so they're told to go to the water department, get a bill and get either a receipt for a clean water bill or if they want to make a, an agreement. Sometimes an agreement is entered into that they pay a certain amount with stipulations that they pay. So that's what the situation was here, is that they, they had already made a payment between the amount of time that we sent this notice out.
And this is not a habitual type of situation, is it?
Off the top of my head, you're talking about this particular business?
Right.
Off the top of my head, I would have to do a little bit of research on that. I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
Any further, Councilman Wenzel?
Can we ask the comptroller, is there any water issues with these other applicants for license renewal that you know of?
No, because I have my department, the clerk's department makes a request and I have my deputy check to see the water status and the bankruptcy status and send a report back to the clerk's office before they approve these requirements. So as of that time, when it was done, there was no issue because we go through that procedure to make sure there isn't. And I haven't entered into any agreements with any of these particular vendors saying no.
So you're satisfied with renewing these contracts as far as you're concerned?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we checked it when Walt sent me the request, but they were good at that point. I can't tell you, they're good now, but they were in good standing at the time of the request.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have members of the public. We have comments from council members.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, Councilman Constance.
This last Saturday, we had the 25th Annual Ecourse Creek Cleanup. And I'd like to thank all the volunteers and the sponsors that were solicited by Councilman Wenzel and family. Councilman Wenzel, in fact, I think has some of the T-shirts there with the sponsors. I was a sponsor, but didn't get my check in in time, but that's fine. We were there, but we pulled a lot of debris out of the creek. We took care of the rain gardens and it was refreshing to see the high school students, the honor students there, working hard, a few from Annapolis, many more from Crestwood. They did a great job. And our now co-chairs, Barb Gorka and Steve Ray, who's an engineer at Ford Motor Company, they just do a stellar job organizing things and executing everything. We had some of the members of the council also show up. So a great thank you to everyone involved. And then on a sad note, I heard today that Brian Winston, who was the former superintendent of schools in Dearborn and the state school superintendent, passed away at the age of 56 of pancreatic cancer. When I was a state rep in Lansing, he was a, represented the Oakland County area schools and has been involved in education. He, a few years ago, had lost, one of his sons in a bad accident and now has passed away. He was the state superintendent for education and did a great job and he'll be sorely missed.
Madam Chair, I'd like to echo.
Councilman Wenzel.
Councilman Constance, thanks for the people, the Ecourse Creek Cleanup. We had over 120 volunteers, which included Councilwoman Clayton, Council Chair Denise and Councilman Bob Constance. We had several, like you said, several students from the local high schools, especially Crestwood. I'm gonna put a challenge out to the other high schools, Annapolis and Robesha to show more masses next year. And I'd like to, can't say enough about our sponsors that sponsor this. We have several sponsors that sponsor every year and it's detrimental in getting money for not only the T-shirts that we hand out to everybody, but to buy equipment to take, pick up debris and for garbage bags and for gloves, for hand sanitizers and for our picnic, barbecue picnic we have afterward. barbecue picnic we have afterwards. And it just takes a second, this, to mention the sponsors' names. We have Sun Glow, Carpet Clean, Affordable Auto Works, a multi-year sponsor, Lisa Hicks Clayton, Dave Abdella, John Riley II, a multi-year sponsor, Sea Crest and Waddle, a multi-year sponsor, Vision Restorations, Wade Trim, a multi-year sponsor, Saturn Food Marketplace, a multi-year sponsor, the Dearborn Heights Rotary Club, sponsors many years, and our platinum sponsors, who sponsor the most money and have been doing it a long time, Studs Hardware, Mike's Barber Shop, the Fairlane Eagles, and the Hall Brothers Rental. And also, new this year for our platinum sponsors, we're very proud to have them, is the Dearborn Heights Firefighters Local 1355, and Elite Sports Training. I'd like to thank all these people, and we hope next year, we have more and more people come out, so I can print up more shirts. And this is the colorful shirt that we had this year.
We really stuck out.
Nobody can miss you.
Oh, yeah, we're well, you know. Yeah, nobody misses us. So thanks again to all the volunteers and sponsors, and thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Any other?
I have something that I want to say. As per the request of my mail person, they asked me to announce this, that this Saturday, May 12, your postal carrier will be coming out to pick up non-perishable donations, put them in a bag by your mailbox, and they will deliver them to a local food bank.
Good evening, everybody. I got a letter today, and I'm a little bit disturbed from a resident, and I'm disturbed because of her frustration. So I'm going to address a, it's a Ms. Hane. She's expressing difficulty reaching my office and wants to talk about some election issues. We answer our phones all the time, so I don't know where this is coming from. But the phone number is 791-3432. If you are listening, please call me tomorrow, ask for me. If you know Ms. Hane, please give her the number and have her call, and we're going to take care of your issues. So I don't know why you're having trouble. Possibly, you don't have our correct number, but 791-3432. So please call us. We'll take care of it.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Earlier today, we had the budget hearing for ordinance, and he told us about all the tickets he has written, and some of them were to abandoned vehicles. People have in store in their boats, in their trailers, in their driveways. And a week ago, council chair had asked Mr. Zimmer about the vehicles that were being stored at the DPW yard. So I'm going to ask Mr. Zimmer if he has found out who they belong to, and why are they there.
Director Zimmer?
I did mention, the one was for one of the, someone that volunteered their motorhome for our Goodfellows thing. That has been moved. The other one, I haven't had a chance to look into it yet.
Who are they licensed to?
Who are they licensed to? You know, well, if you don't know who they're licensed to, you need to tow them away. That's not a storage yard for anybody to store their vehicles or boats in our yard. I mean, we have a hard enough time trying to store things for the general public that we need, let alone storing somebody's boat, that residents don't get a chance to do that. They have to pay to get them stored.
I understand.
So if they're stored in there, they need to be out.
I'm kind of concerned that, you know, that's your yard, and I would hope you know whose stuff is there, because you are the director.
Well, I mean, somebody may bring a boat in, you know, during the day, and depend-
But it's been there.
It's been there for a while.
Been there.
I'll have to look into it. That's all I can tell you.
You don't, do you have a license on it?
No.
I'm sorry, there's probably an MC number we could check, then.
Well, if I may, maybe the police department should check into it. They have to authorize any sort of abandoned vehicle towing, ultimately.
But you're on their property.
Yeah, they would be able, well, but we potentially, there's a process that you have to go through for abandoned vehicles at this time, and if you don't do it right, then the city has to end up bearing the cost. So perhaps the police department, I was kind of actually making a motion over here to the deputy chief, to check that, check the VIN, and then work with Director Zimmer.
Because there should be an MC number on it.
We've had vehicles parked at DPW yard, and nobody knows who they belong to. They just didn't show up there by themselves.
There's one vehicle.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that the process should be that the police department gets involved.
Just out of curiosity, who was the motorhome listed to? Because you said it was a Goodfellows.
Yeah, it was a friend of one of our employees.
What was their name?
The employee's name?
No, the person whose vehicle it was.
Every year, Goodfellows is parked on the corner, and they were, all the DPW people, we come by, and they volunteer, and they cook chili and different things, and have it in that, in that motorhome.
Well, that one, I could understand if it's being volunteered for work in the city, but the other ones don't need to be there. Storing a boat or another vehicle, that's out of the question. Out of the question. So we need to have the police department checking my notes.
I'll have McTate, the preserver.
Thank you.
That'd be perfect. Any other comments from council members? Next, is there any public announcements?
Nancy.
The gentleman have already referred to the successful cleanup we just had, but I'd like to add a couple of names that were there. Diane Webb, our county commissioner, and at the behest of our mayor, Mr. Wild from Westland showed up.
Yep.
And thank goodness, his photographer came. We now have pictures to prove who was there.
Yeah, he emailed me, or texted me, I should say, and I was committed to the University of Michigan. Dearborn's had its alumni day, and they had me as one of their guest speakers, and so couldn't be at two places at once.
You did a good job. All right. And the second item is a problem that we're having at Daly Park. I was almost accosted by one of our senior sitters, Zee today, and she says, "We have a situation with ants that are destroying another one of the trees." She says, "We've lost one," and she doesn't want to lose two. So I don't know, does that fall on the city, DPW, or someone to spray, or whatever? There's apparently a bad tree there that's attracting a lot of ants.
Where is the tree, again?
At Daly Park.
In Daly Park, okay.
Right. And then, thirdly, the neighborhood meeting for the South End that Mr. McIntyre's been helping me out with will again be held on May 16, 7 to 9, at Thorn School. You're all welcome, and the mayor will be one of the speakers that evening. So we hope you all come.
Nancy, but thank you for reminding me about Diane Webb. Not only did she attend the functional Ecorus Creek cleanup and rain guard maintenance, she was also a sponsor.
Right.
She sponsored before, and she actually went down into the creek itself with our chairwoman and another friend, who moved a big clog, and she's, she's really proactive on the creek.
They may have ruined their tennis shoes, too. We ruined our shoes that day, slipping into the water.
And Diane wanted me to make sure that if anyone has an issue with the creek, some clogs or something like that, notify her, and she'll get the county to come out and remove it. We've got a number of areas and addresses where we're already addressing.
And you even planned the weather accordingly.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, it was beautiful weather.
Any other public announcements? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment. I'm going to ask that you please state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment before we do this.
Councilman Wenzel?
A couple of days after our last meeting, I watched, and this is the first time I watched a city council meeting that, since I've been elected, and I was kind of shocked at the, at the end of the meeting, when we had comments from the public, that there was a parade of residents that came up and made negative comments about a certain person. And it's not what we're in business for. I know there was issues, but when I was on the planning commission, we had a rule that if you were, several people were there for one issue, we had them choose a representative and speak for the whole group. And I hope that the chair would exercise her authority and ask any group of people come, instead of coming up one after another, saying the same thing. And at one point, someone made a comment where people were laughing about it, and that's not what we're here for, is to humiliate any residents regardless of the situation.
I do agree with, I do agree with that.
Totally.
I believe that was in one of our agreements that we had at least two years ago, and I believe it was something that was-
Well, I guess we need to repeat it, then.
-done through Mr. Ken Barron. I believe that if we had a large group of people talking about one subject, they picked a spokesperson and did it that way.
Perfect. That makes sense, and I totally agree with that.
Because there's other people that may follow them that want to get a chance to speak, and it gets late.
Yes, it does. Okay, anyone for a public comment? Okay, hearing none.
Somebody's deliberating there.
Oh, go ahead. Come on up. Yes, sir.
I had to go to the bathroom. I missed half the, I didn't, I got it now.
We'll repeat it for you.
All right. Anyways, I'm here about James Beckus. My name is Andrew Katsianis. I've lived in Dearborn Heights for over 30 years. I've been, coached softball, baseball. My kids went to all the schools, everything else. Anyways, we live on Woodshire. Beckus is just out of control. He gets worse and worse, and it's, for his immediate neighbors, it's really bad.
It sounds like something that you would have to address with either ordinance or corporate council, maybe? Would that cover you or private?
It might be, I mean, here's, here's the thing. I would be careful about mentioning people's names in this forum, if we could, although, you know, if you're a public official, but, yeah, I know, but-
Right, we're just trying to be a little respectful here, not put everything on-
Being careful about making sure that no one ends up having a claim made against them in this situation, but I'd strongly encourage that any sort of complaints, and I think I spoke to the folks, you weren't here the last time, if I recall correctly, but some of the other people were, to end up making a complaint or report potentially to the chief. And after the meeting, if you'd like, we can talk about that process a little bit more with you, if you'd like. On the other hand, he does have a right to end up speaking, so I'm just suggesting.
We're just trying to protect you as an individual, so you don't have any lawsuits or something against you.
Well, wait a minute. I thought I was entitled to my opinion, or what I believe, at any time.
We're just saying, be careful.
Whether it's true or not, I can believe something all I want, right? Am I not correct?
Well, sir, it's not necessarily that simple.
I don't know, I don't know.
So that's why we're just-
I'm here, and I'm more than happy to talk afterward. I'm more than happy to. I mean, I'm moving, you know, and it's not, I'm not moving just because of him. My work takes me on the road a lot now, and it makes it hard for me to, to take care of the house and stuff, you know, but he hasn't been a pleasure, that's for sure, you know, I mean, and he's not been a pleasure for other people, you know, and there's, yeah, there's, there's some issues here. It's escalating. So what I'm trying to tell you is, it's not going to stop, and it may get worse, and it may end up with something that's really bad.
Okay, well, we have an alternative to speak after the meeting.
He's not right.
Councilman Muscat?
I spoke to this gentleman earlier, and, you know, we've had these problems come before city council, where it's, you know, neighbor pitted neighbor, and, you know, like I told you, if it's a violation of an ordinance, it goes to ordinance, if it's a violation ordinance, and in my opinion, we'll take care of it. You know, there may be a process they have to go through, but they usually take care of it. Once it becomes something other than that argument, we can't do anything. That becomes something that, it goes to the attorneys. We're not lawyers, we can't solve these issues, and, you know, believe me, I've been there at that podium myself, saying the same thing you have, but when you get up here, then you start learning, we have no control over there. That becomes then something civil.
Well, civil or criminal, in which case-
Or criminal, depending on how far it goes. So it's out of this body's hands at that point, once we turn it over to the proper people, like ordinance and then the police.
We understand, and what we're here is, it has escalated, there is other information, and it's not just one neighbor. It's not a difference between two people. You have several neighbors here right now, for the same person.
Take it to the police or to the attorneys, and-
I would try that route.
Oh, there's been calls, I'm working all the time. I just hear, I hear parts of it, and I just know him.
Because I received those phone calls from an individual party, and, you know, and I was the one that says, "Look, and I could, you know, you called ordinance, it didn't work out for you. I'll call ordinance, see what they had to say." They told me what happened. I got to agree with ordinance to, you know, because that's what they're telling me, there was no violations there. And then, you know, he kept calling me back, and I said, "Look, if it's that much of a bother, then you're going to have to get the police involved." So whatever he did after that, that's up to him, but I can't, I can't mediate this. It's his body.
If we can have a moment of the-
That would be per-
Time afterward, we'd be more than happy to.
I would suggest that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that's the topic.
Any other comments? Okay, well. Welcome to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please. Your name and your address.
My name is Caitlin McClanahan, and I'm a business owner. I held an open house for one of the neighbors in that particular area on Saturday, and this gentleman was absolutely obstructing my open house. He covered my signs, he had picked up rocks in the middle of the road and carried them up and down the driveway and the sidewalk. This was quite the ordeal.
That's time you called the police, so what did they do?
But he doesn't answer the door. He goes back inside when the police are called. The police waited, and they did a fantastic job. I really commend them. They waited for me, they asked me what time my open house ended, and they protected me to make sure that he wasn't out damaging anyone, but he did hinder my sale.
Sorry you had to go through that.
I want you to know that I'm coming from my own business perspective, that he's hindering things for this neighborhood.
Council Chair, if we could, if she could stay after, too, please.
Yes. If you could stay after to discuss it further, we'd appreciate it. Any further discussion? Any more comments from the public?
I have something you-
Please come to the podium.
I've been in this city for over years. Not too many people know me. My name is Francesca Longi. I was the one, the first one to receive the key of the city. But in the meantime, I live right across the street from one person, which your people know. And I started to see, one by one, my neighbors started to leave. The Jaeger at the corner, him, my person across the street, leave too, the real estate right over here. Everybody started to leave for one individual, which, something can be done. I know the person is sick. I know he needed help. How we can help a one individual when he cannot be helped by us? I called the police. The police come, and never broken the law. Comes to the city, they say no ordinance. The people, the ordinance people have been on my house and my backyard, it's all over the place, so many times. I am the culprit. Your people are the judge. If you are serious, and like I was, and like I am, you should be proud of your neighbor, not call the police. The police come to me, never broke any law. He broke the law on me so many times, so many times. He go in my roof. If he fell down, when they say no coming, and he breaks a neck, it's my fault, not his fault. He tried to help me. There is something wrong.
And in your yard, people leave.
This is what I have to say. How we can help, the citizen like him? How you can help?
Mr. Winston?
You are the city, you are the man.
Would you stay after?
What you can do with an individual like that.
Would you stay after the meeting, too, please?
You know, I appreciate what you all are going through, I truly do, but it's gotten to the point that it's gotten out of hand, and that's what the corporate council is here for now. We turn it over to him and let him decide what the next course of action's going to be as far as the law goes. He's the law expert, not us. So we have to turn it over to him, because we don't know, I mean, we don't know the ins and outs of the law, because we're not attorneys or judges. All we can do is ask the corporate council and give him the authority to look into the matter, okay? So that's- Okay? So that's what we've just done. We've given him the authority to look into the matter. So we hoping that, that he will take care of the problem with, however he does it legally with the help of the police department or whatever. I believe, I truly believe Mr. Miyake will take care of this situation.
Yes, sir.
Stay after a little talk.
If you want to talk to the attorney, you can stay and talk to the attorneys. It won't cost you anything, but a little time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Wensel? Anybody else? Anybody?
Motion to adjourn, yeah. Second.
Meeting adjourned.